All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our virtual school committee meeting on Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. We had, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance here. We had the executive session beforehand, but we did not have the formal call to order. So if you would please join me with the pledge of allegiance. There's a flag behind Dr. Kenworthy there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Welcome again. So we did have an executive session beforehand. We only recessed it. We did not complete it. So we will be moving back into executive session after this meeting. So I will have the motion to seal the minutes afterwards, but no votes were taken. Please let the roll call reflect that all school committee members are present. Our little Compton representative present as well. Hello Rita. The first item on the agenda tonight for me is an update from our re-ask. The Rhode Island Association of School Committee Committees has a monthly chairs meeting. And so they've started doing that virtually. A reminder for school committee members that the annual meeting is on May 27th, where they vote in the new board. There will be some breakout sessions for individual participants to, to sign up for on communications, professional development, distance learning. I think the most important thing that came out of this in terms of the impact on schools was they reported that Kevin Gallagher, who is Governor Raimondo's Deputy Chief of Staff, is the person that's overseeing kind of a committee on reopening of schools and how to open and when and under what conditions. So hopefully we will have some information coming out of that process soon. They did mention and highlight this for Mr. Payero as his role in as Chair of the Health and Wellness Committee, that they were looking for an expanded role for the Health and Wellness Committee during a pandemic of more than, and reopening of schools. So it sounds like you'll have a little bit more on the health and wellness agenda coming up here next year as well. They mentioned that hotspots were extended through June 30th. And then, of course, the big issue was the state budget situation and the shortfall. The governor hasn't given a budget yet to the legislature, waiting to see what the federal government comes through with. But it looks fairly scary if you've been reading any of the reports in terms of plugging holes and shortfalls and things like that. So, you know, I've heard optimistic and scary scenarios, but I guess it's just really more on the wait and see. The other thing I would say, because I know this has been a big issue of interest in Portsmouth and I think in every other committee or community across the state, was that a lot of school committees reported confusion regarding high school graduations and what actually was allowed and what's not allowed. And, you know, people were highlighting, you know, newspaper articles reporting what one district was doing versus another. And the conclusion was that, you know, there's, there's, nobody is really doing an in-person graduation and that some of the reports, it looks like, and Superintendent Kenworthy is doing his graduation updates, I'm going to defer to that. But that, you know, things had to be approved through the Department of Health and through RYE. So I think, you know, there's just not a lot of clarity, at least on all the school committees, on kind of what exactly is allowed and what's not allowed. And I think Dr. Kenworthy will be updating that on us, updating us on that later in his report. So that's it from the chairs meeting. Good news and bad news. The town council approved our provisional budget at its last meeting. That's the good news. The bad news is that we took a couple of more cuts. So they cut 105,000-ish out of our operating budget. And I think there's about 131,000 out of capital, so about with the original cut. And again, Dr. Kenworthy is going to talk about the numbers in more detail, but it's quite a significant cut, right? We are one town and, and the, the town is not sure of its revenue projections, but it won't be easy, particularly on the operating side, because some of our surplus coming out of this year is kind of one-time surplus. But we are glad that the town did, did approve most of our, our budget. And I'm going to leave more discussion of that to Dr. Kenworthy. I had the, the honor of participating in the Portsmouth High School National Honor Society taping ceremony, I guess we could call it. They're, they're going to be having a series of ceremonies honoring various seniors and juniors, in this case also juniors, who have gotten nominated for the National Honor Society. And I thought they did a very creative job of speeches by the students and coming up with a nice, nice way to continue the induction tradition, albeit in a modern, modified form. So congratulations to all of them. And then for the committee members, this is the time of year where we just remind you that the superintendent evaluation is coming up. According to our established timeline, Dr. Kenworthy is going to be doing his self-evaluation over the next few weeks and then submitting it to school committee members, who then have the option to, to meet with them and fill out their evaluations, which we will then complete at the end of June, early July. So just something to make sure you have penciled in on your calendar. So that was really just more about announcing the upcoming timeline there. So that concludes the chairperson's remarks. I think we're good there. So on to subcommittee updates. The personnel subcommittee had a meeting in which we reviewed the two contracts that are up for approval this, this evening under business. We also discussed another contract renewal, which will be brought forth at a separate time. And we reviewed the job description for the HR position. We had two votes taken approving language changes on contracts. So that's it for the personnel update. Dr. Kenworthy, recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. So we had, last meeting, I presented to you several names, many names of our high school students who were recognized for, you know, all-state music or art awards. So this evening I have for you a list of names of our elementary and middle school all-state music winners. So as we did at the last meeting, I'm going to read through the names. We do have a certificate here for each of these students, which we will get in the mail at, at this point to make sure that those certificates go out to the students and families. So this evening I am pleased to present to you for recognition on, for the elementary all-state chorus winners, Emma Jervelis, Audrey May, Willow Dean Harple, Olivia Purdy, and Jackson Packenham.
Yay.
So congratulations to those students.
Yes, you, Willow, there. Congratulations, Willow.
And for our Duke School All-State Chorus winners, this year we had Kyle Duke, Avery Smith, Tatum Brennan, and Esther Angel Hayes. So congratulations to all of those students. And again, we will get those certificates out to you in the mail shortly.
Well done. Well done. That's an excellent job. And thank you for tuning in. I don't know, again, there's a lot of people here, so we can't recognize them all, but you did a great, great job. So thank you. Is there any public comments?
We skipped over just one, one other item in recognition. Officially, we did, we did mention it at the last meeting, but I think the news had just kind of come out within a day or so of the last meeting. So we wanted to officially make sure it was on an agenda. So throughout the month of April, there was a statewide reading challenge. We did promote it throughout our district and at every level we're able to, you were asked to read and we, all schools worked it into their schedule each day. And there was an ability for students to log in on the Department of Ed website and, and each day log the number of minutes that they read and what they were reading. So those, those results were kind of calculated and, and at the end of the month of April, Portsmouth Middle School won the middle school reading challenge. So we wanted to make sure we officially congratulated all of the students and staff there for, for their work.
Really awesome. That's great. All right. So good, good work, elementary and middle schools this month. Awesome, awesome job. And thank you, students, for tuning in for your Zoom meeting here. Is there any public comments? Any?
None, and there's no hand raising, so.
Okay. We want to make sure, even though it's a Zoom meeting, that we have opportunities for public input. So just, yeah. All right. Our PHS liaison, Matthew Loebz and Raiden, part of the debate. We're ready for, I saw them here earlier.
I saw Matthew earlier, right?
He's muted. We're going to have to unmute it, I think.
Hi.
Hi.
So not much new. We're just doing our classes. Seniors are done Thursday. And then we go into all the final stuff such as graduation rehearsal. I'm not sure what that'll look like this year, maybe like parking at the Glen and working on that. And then I think we receive our diplomas on the sixth, the day after our graduation. And that's really it. Thursday is my last official school day, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. And we do have a graduation update and senior activities update coming up here. So thank you. And I can't see, is Raiden here? I don't.
I didn't see Raiden's name.
I didn't see her come up, you know.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't, didn't omit her. Okay. Dr. Kenworthy, superintendent's update.
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. So this evening I have a few items to report to you. And I'll start with our regular standing item. It's just a personnel update so that I can update the committee and the public on any personnel changes since our last school committee meeting. So we did have a few resignations. So, you know, we've been reading off retirements of longstanding employees as they retired for us. These employees, I'll reach to the scene, these are just either personnel or family situations where they're moving. And they, they have officially resigned their position, if you will, with us. So the, these positions will be in the list of positions that we're looking to fill for next year. So, so Jody Dean, who is a grade eight special education teacher at Portsmouth Middle School, Morgan Parker, a grade seven science teacher at Portsmouth Middle School, and Gail Taber, who was a clerk at Portsmouth Middle School. So they have all indicated they will not be returning with us for next year. So we wish them well. Thank them for their service to our school department. And it's, you know, some cases it's been a little longer than others. I don't know what Mr. Aruda is doing there to the Portsmouth Middle School staff, but they all tend, they all just happen to be from Portsmouth Middle School this meeting. And the other, the big announcement I have on personnel, we're actually going to save further in the agenda because there is a contract to approve that goes with it. But I do have an official announcement to make on my recommendation for our next assistant superintendent. And again, that'll be on the business portion of the agenda because the school committee needs to approve that contract. So I'll have more to say at that time. The next item I had, just under school closure and distance learning updates. So we're about five weeks remaining in the school year. And so we're just kind of all settling in at this point. I think, you know, everybody has just made the best of wrapping things up through distance learning. So we're getting ready to do that. And we know, obviously, we've got, later, Mr. Amrell and Mrs. Curran-Claire are going to join me to also provide an update on what that will look like for seniors. For all families in general, just know that we are working on a detailed plan for each school, for students to, and families to either be able to come in and pick up items or drop off any remaining items that they need to, you know, to their school. So there'll be more details on that coming out. And that'll be closer to the end of the official school day, depending, school year, depending on what grade the students fall into. With that, we are also working on any plans through school closure related to summer activities. So for us, again, most of those things are going to remain virtual. So typically that's our extended school year program for special education students or credit recovery at the high school level. So we're working on plans for what that will look like virtually. And a lot of our attention now is starting to turn to the fall and the reopening of next school year. And there's a lot of information still, you know, coming down from all levels on that. But we, we did want to announce this evening that we will be putting together a planning or steering committee for us. It'll have many facets, but a big part of that is going to be, we've asked each of our schools, so principals will be leading this effort to start to communicate to staff and to families, trying to get members of a school, you know, reopening steering committee. And then we'll pull representation from that at the district level as needed. So going forward, that'll be the group that will help us as we get more information on what the reopening of next school year may look like, help us to make some of those decisions. I did want to also announce tonight that the town has started to open up some park and recreation areas. So we try to kind of coordinate all of our efforts for anything on our school properties related to that. So we have made the decision based on what the town has reopened at this point, that we have reopened for public use our tennis courts at the high school and in the track at Portsmouth High School. Other than that, any, any other outdoor facilities, including our playgrounds, playgrounds are still across the state off limits unfortunately right now. While we're on this subject, Dr., just to provide a little more detail again around what Dr. Copeland was mentioning for our budget, again, we're heading into the, the final meetings on the town side. So based on revisions that the town had, had to make on revenue projections, we, we have now in partnership with the town helped to reduce a total of $236,125 either from our operating or capital budgets. So, you know, you know, we're certainly willing to do everything that we can there. We're working on plans to, you know, address those, those needs that will still be in our budget. And in my conversations with Mr. Raina on the town side, we feel like we're in a, in a good place to heading into, on June 10th, we will have the annual budget hearing, which is one last opportunity for anybody to come forward, make public comment on the budget. And then on June, the June 24th town council meeting, they'll have the final adoption of the FY21 budget. I did want to mention as well that as we were in, we were in the midst in the last school committee meeting of teacher and staff appreciation week. So, and we tried to recognize as much as possible, you know, the efforts of our staff and teachers virtually throughout that week, but each school had, had things planned. And, you know, typically we have small token, gifts, tokens of appreciation, either at the school or district level to offer to staff. So that, all of those things will be available once, once we are able to all get together. And with that, that is usually the close as well of our Teacher of the Year nomination process. So we communicated that out throughout the, the last few weeks. And we wrapped that up at the end of Staff and Teacher Appreciation Week. So for both our Teacher of the Year and Support Professional of the Year on the Council 94 side, I have all the nominations now and I'll be pulling together selection committees to help me make those final selections. And we will announce those out at the appropriate time. Also wanted to highlight that May been designated as Mental Health Awareness Month. So we have made sure that the resources that we have available through the school and district and our mental health staff, our guidance counselors, social workers, school psychologists, you know, they have, they have all been obviously doing everything that they can throughout distance learning and helping to keep students and families feel as connected as possible. So on the main page of our district website, there is a link regarding Mental Health Awareness Month with just some more resources and other information for people to go to if, if they want to take a look at that. And the last item I had was around, again, graduation and senior activity updates. So I know Mr. Amrell, Mr. Costa, Mr. Amrell is on and Mrs. Curran-Claire, if they could be unmuted to help provide any updates there since they've been leading those efforts.
Thank you, Dr. Kenworthy. I guess nothing is more important to a student, a high school student, than their graduation. And I think, and also to their parents, this has been a journey that culminates with their graduation from Portsmouth High School. And I think that students are somewhat disappointed that they cannot have a traditional graduation ceremony. But we're going to do the best that we can under the guidance of the Round Department of Health and the Round Department of Education with guidelines that they're using for us to go to the polo grounds on June 5th and use a sort of a drive-in style graduation program. Our Graduation Steering Committee has met twice. We'll meet again on Thursday to shore up any plans. But it's a very extensive program where we have to make sure that we have enough bathrooms and proper parking situation around the polo fields. We also want to make sure that we have enough staging area for cars so that they're not backing up on East Main Road. We have extra fire and police because of the number of people that are going to be congregating in one spot. And I know Dr. Kenworthy is working on an insurance plan with a polo vendor to make sure that we're covered. The one benefit of the polo grounds is they have a Jumbotron and what we're planning to do. And we already started the process as we had every student last week. And it took about, I want to say about six and a half hours with two photographers splitting up the gym into sections to, to adhere to the governor's mandate of no more than five people in one space. And we took a picture of their students in their capping gown. And then they rolled over into a virtual crossing of the stage. Also, for the purposes of creating a virtual graduation program that will be shared with students, all students on June 5th, that graduation night. I think everyone that is normally on the speaking engagement will be doing a, their speech this Friday, Thursday and Friday, I believe, with Mr. Marum and Mr. Vasspool. And they will be putting and editing time to make sure that it is of high quality and will be able to share that with students on that Friday. On Saturday morning, we're going to have our last event for our seniors after graduation. And that is the diploma pickup program where they're going to be able to come, pick up their diploma and, and really be their last official act in terms of students at Portsmouth High School. So we're very, you know, one of the things that really is surprising to us as we're getting information from the Department of Ed is to watch the television, television news or, or the newspaper and see other school districts go and do and put out different types of programs that are contradictory to the governor's edict as well as the Department of Health. And shortly after they're, they're shut down from being able to do those things. But of course, the media doesn't cover that and it creates a lot of confusion on the part of parents. It's why they, we can't have a traditional program where students can come up and get their diplomas. It's, it's very, very stressful when, when you see that. But I think most parents understand that we have 243 students that are eligible to graduate. As it is to be able to accommodate all those students at the polo fields is going to be very difficult because there will be a car capacity of 288 cars as, as directed by the polo fields manager. And it's going to be a tight situation regardless. But I want to thank all the members of the committee. We have about 30 members of the steering committee from public safety officials, school committee members, town council administrators, Dr. Kenworthy, teachers, parents, students, all trying to figure out what would be reasonable and what we can do. And like I said, we meet again on Thursday to finish up any other, any other instances that we want to, to ensure that we address. But we are full committed to working, to making graduation work for our students. I know they're excited, some of them. We did a poll recently to, the overwhelming majority of students would prefer to have a drive-in graduation rather than just a strictly virtual graduation. And also an overwhelming number of students wanted to be able to physically pick up their diploma, even though they're going to be in their cars on the day after. So we're hoping to be able to make that a special event as well. And it'll be something hopefully the students will certainly remember because of this unique situation. But it's also a way for our, for our, our families to celebrate. Because as we, they started in kindergarten, we always said that it's a, it's a family that makes, that makes students the best learners possible. It takes family. It takes the student. Of course, it takes the school to make it all happen. And we're trying to see that we give those parents the opportunity and certainly our staff an opportunity to celebrate the students in the best way that we can under the circumstances. We're also having, you know, we have many superlative activities. And I know that Ms. Curran-Claire will share with us some of the events that have happened. Again, most of them are virtual, but the events that typically would happen with our seniors are still going to happen, of course. And some of them already have happened and we're editing them, the pieces and putting them together. But perhaps Ms. Curran-Claire can go through each one of the events that we have and what we're planning to do. Ms. Curran-Claire?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. First, I have to say it's been really great to work with such a group of innovative teacher leaders who serve as advisors for many of these honor societies. They've really come together to be really innovative in how we celebrate our kids. So that's been great. We've had several productive meetings with all the advisors of the National Honor Societies to brainstorm sort of the best way to celebrate our students. It sounds like Ms. Copeland and Dr. Kenworthy had the opportunity to participate in the National Honor Society's ceremony last week. And that's actually a really great example of what the ceremonies will look like. It'll be a combination of, obviously all virtual, but using recorded Google Hangout sessions and virtual ceremonies through Zoom. And then the goal would be to have these ceremonies shared with the individual students and their families as well as posted to the PHS website. The majority of these are finished, although there's still a little bit of editing going on. But, but certainly they'll all be up and running within the next couple of weeks. So that includes, well, the National Honor Society one's already completed. But we really wanted to make it as traditional as possible. So where the officers would get up and actually speech, or speak normally in a traditional setting, they're recording those sessions. So it kind of was working on what worked best for each of the societies. And then the sports awards, I spoke with Mr. Trezvant today. He will, the coaches each will record a short video announcing the, the coaches' awards and the, and the future plans of each of those winners. And then Mr. Trezvant will present the boosters award and the school sportsmanship award. And that will also, of course, be posted.
How are you doing the, the senior honor ceremony along this, like where they get, you know, appointments to the Naval Academy or, you know, scholarships? How, is that also going to be all virtual?
Yep, that will have to be virtual as well. We're meeting with the department chairs tomorrow because they typically also have their own awards. And as you know, that ceremony can be pretty lengthy when it includes the scholarships from both, you know, the, from the outside agencies as well as all of the awards. the outside agencies as well as all of the awards internally from the school. So we're trying the best way to certainly celebrate all those students, but without making an additional like three hour virtual meeting. So that, that should be finalized as well for tomorrow, but looking at the best way to make sure that parents who have students in multiple societies aren't missing out on anything either.
Because of the shutdown, some of the civic organizations are also behind the eight ball. And I think what's going to probably happen is that once they start get rolling and having their meetings and determining who's going to be receiving awards, it might be a rolling event as we go throughout the summer. It might not just be like we used to have it all in June because some of the organizations are shut down as well and they're not entertaining any scholarship discussions. So we're hoping that we can keep on them and they will keep on us and give our students their due when they're ready. So it might end up being some of those students will be recognized in the summer when they, when they, the organizations come back together.
And also like with the Triumph Music Honor Society and with some of the sports awards that are actually physical awards, many of those companies have not obviously been in working service during the last couple of months. So some of the actual physical awards are not ready yet and we're not sure when they'll be in. So while the kids will be recognized, they probably won't be receiving the actual physical awards till the summer as well.
Can we, can we post those recognitions on either, either the website and/or listserv?
Absolutely.
So that we can acknowledge the recipients?
Absolutely.
Do we have a rain date for graduation, Mr. Emerald?
We do. We're, depending on the nature of the, the rain situation, it, we're probably not going to go the next day only because if it's not good enough for Friday, that field slopes down pretty heavy and it's probably not going to be ready for a Friday car engagement. We're probably looking at Sunday or Monday if, again, the weather cooperates. The vendor, Polo Grounds folks indicated that it would be, they don't have any events planned for that following week, but we want to try to make sure that, we have to basically go out like an umpire and make sure that the cars are not going to get stuck in the field. So if that, if the cars can move on, onto the field, then I think we can, we can safely say we'll try to gather everybody together as soon as possible. But probably if it's not going to be Friday, it most likely will not be Saturday. It'll probably be Sunday or Monday.
Then would that push off or push back the actual diploma pickup or would you still have the diploma pickup?
I, I think it probably, it just as a matter of protocol, it would, the diploma pickup probably be the day after the actual grad, the actual virtual graduation.
This is probably a stupid question, but we'll have a photographer on hand for the actual hand, handoff of the diplomas?
We already did that, Fred. We did the actual handoff of the diploma. Oh, we actually did the crossing of the stage at the, in the third gym this past Monday with Mr. Vasspo, the videographer, who the students went, turned their tassel and for the purposes of the virtual graduation film.
Good.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you, Dr. Kenworthy. Thank you, Mr. Emerald, Ms. Curran-Clare. Thank you for all that. Okay.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
We have to do a roll call vote for those of us joining you per open meeting laws. Ms. McDade?
Aye.
Mr. Payero?
Aye.
Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Mr. Shears?
Aye.
Emily Copeland?
Aye.
Unanimous. Can I have a motion for discussion and approval of the contract for the Assistant Superintendent, please?
So moved. Second.
All right, Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. So this evening, I am pleased to present to you my recommendation to be our next Assistant Superintendent. This is Elizabeth Viveros, who we all know very well as the principal of Melville Elementary School. And although we've, you know, it's always great to be able to end up having a final candidate for a position like this in our own district. This was a, an open and advertised process. A total of 35 extremely qualified applicants answered our original posting. We did have an initial interview team which assisted me in, in helping to interview an initial group of candidates who, who, you know, the specific job qualifications we were looking for. That initial group helping me on, on the interviews was inclusive of stakeholders throughout our district. All schools were represented. Again, all stakeholder groups. And from there, we were able to narrow things down to a list of three finalists who then interviewed in the next round with myself, Dr. Copeland, Mr. DeRro and Dr. Colwell. And, and then had, I had some follow-up from there individually as well. So again, throughout that, all of that process and taking everything into consideration, we are very pleased that we ended up being able to, you know, offer this position to Liz. I just wanted to say a couple of things. While most people in our district probably know her as the principal of Melville Elementary School. She's, she's been there for the past eight years. Prior to coming to us in Portsmouth, she did work as a special education teacher at the elementary and middle level in the Bristol Warren School District. And depending on how far back you go in our district, what people may not realize is that when Liz first took over at Melville eight years ago, the school had been placed on warning status due to, you know, performance on school accountability indicators. And so slowly but surely, under her leadership, each year, the results have improved. And this, in, in the last round of testing that we had for 2019, Melville fourth graders, who were the students who would have been at Melville for their entire career, ended up scoring second overall in the state in ELA and third in math. So, you know, just, just one demonstration of how far Melville has come under her leadership. This past year, Liz also served as our district MTSS coordinator, helping us to improve our efforts there. And in that capacity, she has spent a lot of time working in all of our schools. And so, you know, was able to really get to know a lot of our middle and high school staff as well. On a, also a kind of a personal level related to her qualifications, Liz is in the final stages of completing a doctorate from Northeastern University. And again, I am looking forward to her being in this position and being able to work alongside me as, as we look forward to many great things in our district to come.
Applause, applause, applause. Nice, nice, nice comments. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. So before asking for a response here, are there any comments, questions, school committee members? Mr. Ferber?
I think I've been on a school committee for nearly as long as Liz has been in the school district. And I can recall her narrowly being beaten out, I think, once, maybe twice for the Blue Ribbon Award. And then I think you were nominated twice for Principal of the Year, of the Year and lost to someone else that, you know, for unknown reasons. So I mean, your record of accomplishment is, is terrific. I mean, we're so lucky to have you. I think, I think this is a terrific appointment and I, I want to be among those that hardly congratulates you for this.
Thank you.
And then we expect, we expect great things in the future. It's a big job. You've got responsibility for, for all of the, the teaching and learning, excuse me, managing the federal grant programs. It's a, it's a pretty difficult job. So we wish you well.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I'll comment. I think it's a well-deserved promotion. She brings a lot of energy whenever she walks in a room. She likes to play stuff. And so I think we'll see new good things coming our way with Liz in that position.
Thank you.
Hearing, no?
I have a quick, 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 quick comment. And I was on, I was on the original, the first phase and Elizabeth stood out wholeheartedly. And I'm so happy that she moved, she, she got the position and now you get to deal with us a whole lot more, which may be a blessing. But really, I'm proud and I think that it's the best choice for Portsmouth.
Thank you.
So, let me ask Attorney Carol here, do we have to, for the motion to approve the contract, we say just to approve all of the contract? What do we do here?
Yes, you're approving, you're approving the contract. That's what the agenda item is. Dr. Kenworthy has already appointed her under his new ability as the January and you're just approving her contract.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. And now I'd like to call the vote. Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Mr. Shears?
Aye.
Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Mr. Payero?
Aye.
Ms. McDade?
Aye.
Emily Copeland?
Aye.
Unanimous, seven zero. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Would you like to say anything?
I would. I just have a few words. I want to start by thanking the school committee, Dr. Kenworthy, all of the individuals involved in this interview process. I'm honored to have been selected as Portsmouth's next Assistant Superintendent. I've had the opportunity to work here in the district for the last eight years and I am so excited to be able to advance my career right here in Portsmouth, a community that I have truly fallen in love with. So I look forward to the work ahead, the continued collaboration with our families, school committee, administration, all of our amazing teachers and staff. Just thank you, thank you, thank you. I didn't know I could be so nervous on a Zoom call here, but just, I really appreciate it and I'm excited for the work ahead.
Well, we're pleased to have you join us and I think particularly with distance learning, I think Mr. Paul has been thinking, what did I get involved in this last couple of months? But we've been grateful to have you with us and, and I think you're going to have a lot on your plate with teaching and learning and figuring out how we move forward after, after this episode. So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
So thank you. And with, with your approval this evening and as you mentioned, so Kathy Spala will be wrapping up as we approach the June 30th, July 1st official start date. For Liz, this will provide some good transition time between Kathy and with Liz being right in the district. And again, with your approval, I have ready to go. So we will post tomorrow the opening for Melville principal and hopefully be able to move on that quickly with the goal of having somebody in place in that position for July 1st as well.
July 1st?
That's the goal, Dr. Copeland. We will, we will see.
Wow. I was thinking, so Liz, you're not going to do both jobs?
I think for a little bit I might be.
I'm joking. I'm joking.
Now, well, you know, we will see how that plays out, but we're going to move this as quickly as we can, starting tomorrow.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Well, congratulations again.
Thank you.
All right. Can I have a motion for discussion and approval of contract renewal for administrative assistance to the high school principal, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in, I'm sorry, after you roll call again. Ms. McDade?
Aye.
Mr. Payero?
Aye.
Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Mr. Ferber? Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Mr. Shears?
Aye.
Emily Copeland?
Aye.
Unanimous. Can I have a motion for discussion and action, a one-time exception to school committee policy, DFAA, in order to establish a COVID-19 special revenue fund?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Kenworthy?
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. So I did prepare for the school committee. Again, we've been talking about this for a few weeks now, but just as a background, this is a step that most school districts and municipalities are trying to take right now with a lot of the uncertainty around COVID-19 and the economy and where things may go. But on February 24th, 2015, the Port School Committee adopted a fund balance spending policy that outlined guidance for the appropriate use of any unassigned fund balance. And the policy summary states that no less than 1.5% of general operating expenditures will be kept in reserve to cover unanticipated emergencies and the remainder of any fund balance, if any, shall be used for capital projects. However, for reasons we have been discussing, I believe that any surplus from fiscal year 2020 that would have been transferred to the capital fund under this policy should instead be transferred to a COVID-19 special revenue fund to be used for unanticipated COVID-19 purposes in district fiscal policies. Therefore, I request the school committee to pass the following motion: To amend the fund balance spending policy to provide a one-time exception to funding balance spending policy, DFAA, to establish a COVID-19 special revenue fund.
Yeah, I think, I'm going, I think we should, Mr. Ferber, can you amend your motion to the language that was stated by the superintendent there? Do you have that in front of you?
I don't have the language in front of me, but I-
Or, Mr. Payero, Ms. Holtman, I'm seeing you on screen. Do either of you have that in front of you?
I do have the item. Well, okay, you can go.
I think we should do that actual language.
Yes, I do. You want me to read, you want me to read the entire thing?
No, just the motion that says to amend.
That, with quotation.
To amend the fund balance spending policy to provide for a one-time exception to the fund balance spending policy, DFAA, to establish COVID-19 special revenue fund. Is that what you mean?
Yeah. So you just amended, you moved to amend your motion to that. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shears. And let's vote on this amended motion. Mr. Shears?
Aye.
Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Mr. Payero?
Aye.
Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Ms. McDade?
Aye.
Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Emily Copeland?
Aye. I think I got everybody there. Okay. So we are now, we have the actual motion that you need there to amend our policy to a one-time thing. So now we're on discussion of doing this, right? So then if we'll approve this motion, we'll have it as the language states. I think this is a really smart idea. I was just seeing, I think, Education Week had an article the other days talking about how they're expecting districts to have 5% more expenses next year because of this, as well as declining revenues, which you can see by our, our budget decreases. I think this is a very prudent move to make sure that we have, you know, money in place for maybe additional special ed costs or maybe professional development for remote learning or extra Chromebook and technical support. I mean, I could see where there might be a whole myriad of, or maybe if we do, Mr. Shears was talking about how we may have to split classes, you know, like half days or they talked about extended school years, who knows what. So I think it's very prudent to have, have this there. I am totally in favor of this. Other comments?
I- Go ahead, Mr. Payero?
Kate, you definitely go first.
Okay. Sorry, Ms. Holtman.
I completely agree. I am 100% in favor of this too. I see, I definitely see things appearing that we were not planning for as a result of this.
Payero?
My question, this is probably where I would have slipped Mary on and posted during a meeting, but I just want to make sure that we cross our, what do you call it, dot our i's and cross our t's. Is this like in line with state statutes?
Yes, it's your, it's your school policy. So we're basically just changing your policy as to what you're going to do with your surplus fund. So yes, it is.
Just want to make sure that doesn't come back to bite us.
Right. And that, that, this still enables us to have the 1.5% emergency fund in case, you know, students move into the district with special needs or, you know, those one-time unexpected cost kind of things. But this is really then used for COVID-related issues will be this other one. Okay. See, no further discussion. Can I call the motion then? Ms. Holtman? We're, we're voting on that.
Aye.
Aye? Yep. Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Where's my next one? Mr. Payero?
Aye.
Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Shears?
Aye.
Ms. Copeland?
Aye.
Ms. McDade?
Aye.
Sorry, I was just thinking that was only six. Sorry about that. You're down below. Okay, unanimous for that. Moving on to item D.
I move for discussion and action on the budget transfers for year 2020 in the amount of $279,963.50, which essentially is savings from the transportation expenditures.
Well, just, just the motion of the money and then we'll have Mr. DeRro explain it.
Second.
Mr. Shears? Okay, Mr. DeRro? Okay, Mr. DeRoe.
Just going to open up the file. Give me one second.
Randomly calling people just to see if they're awake, right? You know, I'm a client, I can sort of say, so what were you thinking about that last question there, Mr. DeRoe?
Top quiz.
Welcome to the world of remote learning.
Go ahead, Chris, sorry.
All right, no, thank you. I needed that time. I have it up now. So as Mr. Ferber was about to say, we do have $279,963.50 worth of transfers. All of this money is coming from the transportation contractor line, which is the line where we're seeing quite a large surplus since we shut down all of our busing. We are transferring. Would you want me to read through all of these or maybe just hit the big ones?
Hit the big ones.
Okay. So tuition to other school districts, $30,742.90. We've had some additional students tuitioning in at both the Met, NAC Tech, and Middletown CTE program. There's $53,649.80 in testing fees. That is the district paying for primarily the AP exams for the students this year. We talked about it at previous meetings. $30,000 in claims and settlements related to the APRA legal fee settlement that we had earlier in the year, and then $118,895.92 for technology hardware, and that is related to purchasing next year's Chromebooks that were part of our capital budget next year that was cut by the town. We will purchase those this year.
Right, and I just, I think it's very smart that we're purchasing them now because I'm sure a lot of districts are trying to purchase Chromebooks, so.
Absolutely, that's correct.
Any questions on anything?
Yeah. I have a question, I think of Joey Emeral. I'm just curious with respect to the, the exam fees. Did our students have difficulties with the advanced placement tests? Like I read.
That's not really on the agenda.
Yeah. Well, okay.
I don't think we can.
It's not on the agenda.
I, I'm sorry about that, but.
All right.
Okay. But maybe we could put that on a different agenda. This is just about like the finance and the transfers? Okay. Seeing no hands raised or anything. We'll call the motion, call the motion here. Mr. Shears? Approval? Aye, okay, Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Mr. Payaro?
Aye.
Ms. McDade?
Aye.
Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Mr. Vagni?
Aye.
Emily Copeland? Aye. Seven passes, seven zero. Okay. This is just a motion for discussion? Item E?
I move for discussion on the Ride Stage Two facilities plan next steps.
Second.
All right, Dr. Kenworthy?
Thank you, Dr. Copeland. So I wanted to get this item on the agenda so that we didn't give it too much, although I think everyone is aware. So back in February, as you know, we submitted our Stage Two application, which is the culmination of over a year's effort on developing a master facilities plan that would have resulted in major improvements to all of our school buildings to move forward. As you know, this plan would also have required a $65.8 million bond proposal that we would need to be getting ready for to submit to the November ballot. After submitting that, in, in March, we then heard from the Ride School Building Authority that approval of our Stage Two application was unlikely based on their metrics for approval because we are still waiting on the final transfer of a parcel of land on the Melville property. That was Navy land, so falls under federal government guidelines. All indications are that we are in process of officially acquiring that land, but without that proper documentation, again, approval of our Stage Two application was going to be unlikely. So based on the recommendations of the Ride School Building Authority, on April 7th, I came before you and requested your approval to temporarily withdraw our Stage Two application for possible future resubmission when we wrapped up the final land transfer at Melville. Obviously, in the midst of all of that, the COVID-19 pandemic outbreak has, you know, taken effect. And, you know, also, we do have, you know, an economic impact to, to consider there overall for, you know, for you. And, you know, there is the question, you know, based on what we know now about when it is time to reopen our schools and social distancing measures, again, whether our plans for that project would, would still be the plans that we want to move forward. So this is on for, for discussion purposes only tonight, but I did want to, again, not, not lose too much time here in trying to think of what we want our next step to be. We are still waiting for that final transfer to come through for the Melville property. However, we do have the option of submitting a request for a bond referendum to go on November ballot, kind of as a contingency placeholder, if, if everything did, did come through in time with land transfer and we thought we could get approval for Ride. We have the option of, you know, right now, we have withdrawn our Stage Two application. We could still kind of keep that in abeyance. We could hold off on any November ballot language and, and just kind of write out the next few months and see what happens. However, the only thing I would just go there is that our current ride-approved facilities capital plan is expiring as of December 31st, 2020 this year. We are in the final stages of the few remaining projects there. So once that plan expires without an approved Ride facilities capital plan of some sort, we are not eligible to receive reimbursement for the projects. Again, as you know, only those ride-approved projects are the ones that, that can receive the reimbursed, excuse me, reimbursement. So again, I wanted to put this on for discussion purposes to kind of help, help direct what you wanted the next steps to be in moving forward. I do see, so our, our partners here from Colliers, Mr. Costa, Derek Osterman.
Okay.
Holly, is that you under Sawyer? Yep, so I think it's listed as Don Sawyer as well, Mr. Costa. So.
Very good.
Holly and Derek from Colliers are here. If, if anybody on the committee had, had further questions for them for any of this as well.
So, I, I mean, Mr. Shears, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I was just thinking that with everything that's occurred with the virus, that I really think that we need to reorganize and maybe have some kind of a subcommittee on the facilities plan. I think to throw away the option for reimbursement, we should not throw that away if we possibly can, but we should talk about these issues and see what, what can be done in light of the, the situation.
Derek, this is Chris. I know you and Holly spent some time talking about what a couple of the options may be for us. Would you mind maybe just putting those on the table so everyone can understand what they are and what the timeline might look, look like?
Yeah, sure, happy to do that. And thanks, everyone, for having us back at your meeting. So as the superintendent had explained, if you put enabling legislation through the General Assembly now, you could still go to voters this November and get a bond referendum approved. I'm thinking you'd probably want to do it for about the 65,8.8 million that you currently have contemplated. But technically, you could probably do that for whatever amount. Beyond that, if you want to hold back, the, the next window to re-enter and submit Stage Two would be September, so September of 2020. That would generate a state approval in November of 2020. And then you would have six months from that state approval to go to, to your voters. So if you had already teed up to be voting with the general election in November, that would take care of that. Otherwise, you'd want to call a special vote and referenda prior really to the end of April 21. If you wanted a bit more time, we could request from the state that if you still wanted to submit in September but weren't ready to go to voters, if they'd be willing to consider a longer lag between their approval and going to voters, so we could potentially set you up to go to the community in November of 2021. The third option would be to take the whole thing and shift it out a year. So if you did not want to go back in September with a new Stage Two, you could potentially re-enter with a Stage Two in February of 2021. That would generate a state approval in May of 21. And then again, you'd be looking based on that six-month window of going to your voters in November 2021. Any extension beyond those three options, so we're really talking about between this November and next November, puts bonuses at risk. So bonuses start to expire at calendar year end 2022, which I know is, in many communities, one of the principal reasons to, to act now with some of these bigger asks. And what, what happens at the end of calendar year 2022 is anything that you've not designed and bid and put out on the street and have a contract for, the first 10 potential percentage points disappear. Those are the most likely easiest to get. So the, you know, it, it starts to matter less and less when you do the larger projects, if you miss those bonuses. Beyond 2021, certainly anything's possible, but you're looking at perhaps a restart. Within all that framework, I think, understanding the economic situation and revenue across the state, we could certainly look at what you will be submitting when you do submit your Stage Two. Does it still need to be the full ask? Or is it something less? And what does that look like? You know, so all of that could be studied. But, but that's really where we are. That was a lot, so I'll pause and try and answer any questions.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Ferber.
Just a second, Alan. I think all of this dictates a need for a capital subcommittee meeting to consider all of these options because I don't know how, for the, for the short-term foreseeable future, we're in the lowest interest rate environment we're likely to see in our lifetimes. So I don't know how that affects, because we wouldn't really be going out, we wouldn't be actually financing a bond for, for, well, I'm not even sure when we'd, we'd see a takedown on the, on the money. But, but in the near term, the next three years maybe, you know, it's speculative, but we might be looking at some of the lowest rates that we've ever seen. We've got a lot to consider.
Yeah, I think the capital subcommittee is a good idea. Mr. Shears?
Yeah, I mean, in, in one respect, we were basically going for the, what I call the whole boat with the submission. And what I've seen so far on the approvals and what they're looking for up at the state, I have now come to various conclusions in my mind of what they're proving. And sadly, I've been disappointed. And I've now, in my mind, thought that it might be wise. Fred brings out a valid point as far as the, the cost of money in the, in the near future. But I think that if we looked at some projects potentially on our own, where we have a certain amount of reimbursement and maybe where we can have more control as to what the end product is going to be, that I think that our school system is going to come out at the end. I'm, I'm dreadfully afraid that what they're going to approve up there at the state is really functionally obsolete or below standards. And I, quite frankly, I have just a certain amount of time, I think, left on the committee. But I really don't want to be, from what I see, and I'll go on record of being associated with a lot of things that they want. For instance, their room size there, that they're allowing up there. It's too small for what's, what's required now because of the health conditions, hallways and whatnot. So if they're going to require these items and they're not going to suffice, even if we get things 50% on a dollar, if when we open up, they're not sufficient for our children, it's a waste. And so I think that we really need to talk about these items and, and see whether we want to approach this on a large scale, if we want to take it and go piecemeal to various things at the various schools. We've had them bring out the experts, the various items that look like we need. For instance, the elevator at the one school, the connector and the various other items. So it's certainly been a good education, but I think we need to re-examine. We still have the issues at the middle school with ventilation, some of the other items. But I think, and I'm very confident that if we take and look at these items, that we can address them ourselves. And quite frankly, I have more faith in Portsmouth than I do in the state of Rhode Island. So I, I know we have to deal with them as far as for the, for some of this reimbursement, but I think that we're going to be better off with the product that we end up with if we talk about this in a subcommittee.
Dr. Copeland, you and I, we should just mention, you and I received a call as well from the Rhode Island General Treasurer, Seth Magaziner, who was just following up. I think there was a little bit of misinformation that we had withdrawn, you know, back when we withdrew in March. It was, you know, because of economic uncertainty. So, you know, I, I did clear up for him the, the specific reasons why we had to withdraw at that time. But I, I know in my conversation with him, Dr. Copeland, he indicated he would also be glad to connect with, whether it was the capital subcommittee or whichever group, if, if we had questions around financing and those kinds of things.
Yeah. The, the other thing is, our state legislatures have, legislators have reached out. And, and maybe Mr. Osterman knows the answer to this. If they, if we put in the enabling legislation now, right? And, and let's just say they, they go ahead and they put it in for, you know, whatever pie in the sky. We can always go lower. And it would, it would also not just be for this November, but it could all, that, that, that enabling legislation would then still be good for a special election, right?
The, so let me do that in pieces. So yes, if you put in for whatever amount, that, that's not a commitment to borrow funds. That's just giving you access to them, should, you know,
Yeah.
the voters approve that. In terms of the timing of when it's introduced on the floor and then when you have to bring it to voters, I don't know the answer to that. I'd need help with, you know, probably your legal or bond counsel team to, to look at timing. But obviously, if you want something to go to voters this November, we want to catch the General Assembly before they recess for the summer, depending upon what that looks like this year. It's, these are a little strange this year.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, I think the only thing I would add based on kind of the conversations with our legislators and Mr. Magaziner is I don't, I don't see a reason why we, I mean, it's kind of like covering all our bases. We might want to ask for enabling legislation to be put in on the chance that, particularly if it can go for both November and a special election. Because like Mr. Osterman said, we're not really sure what the state of the legislature is going to be, you know, next November or December or whatever. So I think that's something that, that, you know, we might just say, why not put it in? And then that doesn't close the door on us for something. But I agree with Mr. Shears, Mr. Ferber, that, that we should have this, maybe have the capital subcommittee, you know, take a look at the different options and, and see what can be done. The other thing that was interesting that Mr. Magaziner pointed out is that some communities, and I think Cumberland is the case here, they were able to put on the bond vote before voters that, you know, this money would only be borrowed if Ride approved. So that might be another way just to, you know, ensure that to the public that this isn't just, you're not saying yes for anything. It would be if we had what we needed. And then the, the, there was a third point. I was trying to remember what that was. But, oh, that had to do with the Navy Land. And that I think we, and this is really for you, Dr. Kenworthy and Mr. Rinear over at the town, that, you know, it probably might behoove us to reach out to our federal representatives, you know, our senator and congressman to see if they can move the paperwork thing along. I think any Portsmouth resident will tell you, whether you live in Redwood Farms or you've been looking at the tank farms or whatever, that, you know, this could take forever. And, you know, if it's not going to come through, we need to know that. I think, like Mr. Shear said, we might need to go back to the drawing board in some cases here, so.
I was, I was chair of the.
Here and see if we could bring in our senators and congressmen to help us on this a little bit.
Sure, I will check in with him tomorrow on that. I know, I know, all indications, last I spoke to him, were, you know, that he, he was getting, you know, positive information from people on the federal government side for the transfer.
You really have to stay on their backs. I was on the redevelopment agency for eight years, seven or eight years. And that was eight years ago. And still, nothing's happened with regard to the tank farms and the backyard in Melville, nothing's happened there. It's just ridiculous. So, I mean, this Melville situation should be a much simpler transfer, but you've really got to stay on their backs.
Yeah, and so anyway, I do think, you know, again, there's no vote that needs to go for this, but it was, we really appreciate the information, Mr. Osterman, and kind of the options. But I do think it's just, Dr. Kenworthy, you want this back at the capital subcommittee?
Yeah, that sounds like what I'm hearing. So I will, I will get to work on scheduling a capital subcommittee meeting as soon as we can get it.
Mr. Ferber?
I just want to ask Derek if he would be so kind as to submit to Dr. Kenworthy those options that you represented a few moments ago so that we could take them into consideration in our next capital subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, absolutely, we'll send some along, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, are there other comments, requests on that?
Yeah, I have one.
You're bad, me?
Okay, my concern is bringing forward a bond, you know, in a possible economic downturn.
Yeah.
Right now, the smart money is, it's going to be bad. And so, you know, you have one camp, the optimist, run by the president, says it will snap back in two or three months. And then everyone else is saying this could take a year, two years. And I think that's something that capital committee should weigh in, you know? Yeah, do we really want to put forward a bond that has little chance of winning in November?
Right.
Let's think about, because it sort of takes away the credibility as well. Come back a second time.
Good point, Tom.
Yeah, excellent point, Tom. I do think, though, we have to remember that we have to do something with Ride. I mean, and maybe Mr. Deero, that's the other option that needs to go out. Like, if we don't put in a Stage Two application, what do we have to put into Ride to at least get, you know, the 35% more maintenance and boost and whatever we normally, we do, right?
Yeah, I mean, we would have to put in a Stage Two either way. I think the question is, what's the size of that Stage Two? Is it a five or $10 million bond for those priority maintenance items that we talked about? Or is it a $65 million bond? Personally, I'm a little concerned. I think Dr. Kenworthy mentioned this. Given everything that's happened since we finished all of our master planning, I'm concerned that our designs are outdated. So for example, at Hathaway, if we're going to move an entire class, we've died back to Hathaway, I don't think that cafeteria is going to work for social distancing at all. It was going to be tight before to begin with. So I think we do need to take it back to the capital subcommittee, talk through what those options are. And maybe it's a combination of a small Stage Two for priority repairs so that we can continue to move forward while we rethink whether or not we have enough space to do things we wanted to do or whether we need to do some other, other things in our big plan. But just take into the consideration everything we know now that we didn't know four months ago.
Yeah. All right, well, lots for you to think about there and lots for the capital subcommittee to chew on at their upcoming meeting. So, financial reports, Mr. Deero.
Thank you, Derek and Holly.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you coming.
Absolutely, have a great day.
You too.
So this financial report is for the year-to-date period ended April. I think I had just given you March at our last meeting. Not much has changed. We still do expect, again, we've talked about this, the one-time surplus. We had been projecting actually a deficit for most of the year, but then obviously, once school closed, this is not a normal surplus. We recognize this related to COVID-19. Looks like it'll be somewhere in that $800,000 range. As you saw earlier tonight, we're using some of that surplus for Chromebooks and various other things. So that's where we are right now, that's our best thinking.
Okay. Thank you. Any, wait a minute, I gotta switch back to another screen here. Committee members, any questions on anything? Not seeing anybody, okay. We will, we will not be adjourning. We will be recessing to executive session, which means we have to all leave this meeting and go back to the executive session link. So before doing that, just like to announce our next meeting is June 9th. And they've extended the ability for school committees to meet virtually. So we will be meeting virtually as well. Thank, thank you all. Oh, you're, I know you're thrilled with that, right, Alex? So thank you all for coming. And can I have a motion to recess in?
I'm moved.
Turn to the second session. Second. Ms. Holtman?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Shears?
Aye.
Mr. Ferber?
Aye.
Mr. Vadney?
Aye.
Ms. McDade?
Aye.
Mr. Payaro?
Aye.
Aye, Emily Copeland, aye, unanimous. Thank you all for coming and have a good evening. Congratulations again, Ms. Viveros.